...stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, just as one."
Oh. Okay. I haven't had a chance to read that yet, but... Okay, under the agenda adjustments, I would like to add back in, under discussion items, the school committee goals. I did some work looking up the value statement. Remember, we have a mission statement and a vision statement, and so I get some information to share quickly with you tonight. I don't think you probably want to vote on it, but at least you can look it over and see what you think.
Where you gonna put that, Tina?
Under discussion items, Alan.
Okay. I thought I did.
Well, it was originally, then it was taken off. And as I read through the minutes, I realized I was supposed to put something together for the value statement, so I did. And so I want to put it back on, so we can get it out of the way. All righty.
Do we sign these individually, or do we all sign one copy?
Well, you gotta vote first.
We gotta vote on it first.
Because then we're gonna sign one copy, you're right.
Okay. Those are just the adjustments, right? You want to do...now we have to approve the minutes.
That was the only adjustment I had, was the vote to authorize...
Do you want to do the adjustments now? Or in, under discussion items?
Oh, adjusting the minutes.
Adjust...yeah, the agenda adjustments.
Yeah, we did that. Ding bing.
Yeah, second vote.
Second vote.
And then school committee goals.
Okay, so, but we don't do that right now.
No.
No, okay. So, on to the minutes.
Good point, I didn't get you, I'm sorry.
I had a correction from Donnell on page five of the minutes.
All righty.
Administrator contracts.
Yes.
A motion was made and seconded to approve the contracts for Superintendent Gendron. Motion was carried unanimously. Another vote was taken to approve the contract for Principal Goff. The vote was four to one to approve.
Again, I couldn't remember who made the motion and who seconded it. So, all right, so...
I made that motion for...
Do we want to put that in? It's okay, so let's go with what the...
Actually, I think I made both.
Okay. So, motions by...
And seconded is by? Come on, those old pre-sales can remember.
No, I'm just...I'm doing two things at once in my head, and it's not working. Go ahead, ask me again, Alan, please.
Who seconded the motion?
That's what I was trying to figure out in my head. Who seconded that motion for Goff? I don't remember either.
I think it was either Wendy or Joe.
Do you remember who seconded?
It's clearly Wendy.
It's Wendy, okay, Wendy did it.
I remember doing it.
Good, okay. And then you made it for the superintendent?
For Mark, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, and Joe, you seconded it for Mark. There we go. So now we got that in the minutes, okay, Alan. Joe, second.
Okay. Audrey for the principal, Wendy for the principal second, Audrey motion for the superintendent, and Joe second for the superintendent.
Right. Okay. And the amendment was that they, for Goff, it was four to one?
Yes.
One, four, no, four. The principal was four to one.
For the principal, four to one. Okay.
Does that track okay? Donnell?
Yeah.
Good.
Thanks.
Any other comments, changes?
I didn't.
Deletions?
How did your thing go, Alan?
My?
G O B?
It was so much fun!
Was it?
I've done it before, but this is fun. It really is.
Great.
And then somebody put this ugly picture in the paper with me and my T-shirt on from Sebago Elementary.
Is that right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Well, not just me, it was the kids, I happened to be standing by there.
Yeah. All right.
I'll make a motion when you approve the minutes as amended. Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Good. They are accepted as amended. We have no public comments on agenda items.
Anyone saying...
Let me run up and get the sheet real quick, it might be so...
Okay, yep. Well, they're beating the door down as we speak. Presentations and reports. Three through five teachers? Is that supposed to be there? No. I thought we crossed that off before.
We did.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we have teachers.
We have three.
We crossed them off. Budget issues? So that's an...
Well, I got that on the superintendent's report.
Doesn't it super that's anyway?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so that's done. Six is out.
Okay, so that's another agenda adjustment, is to eliminate presentations.
Okay.
All of them?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Also, I have to say that, just in the beginning of the paper, it says there was operations committee from four to five, which you had up here, and there wasn't one today. It's not every single...
No, this is what Kathy has sent it to me, and things sometimes change. Keep in mind, this was done 14 days ago, 15 days ago.
Yeah, exactly.
All righty.
I had it in my calendar too, I was totally prepared, and I was in my office waiting.
Well, I know growth that there was...
Now, question on that, because I know sometimes in the past, Tina, you've had a different agenda. The system we've got works pretty good, where the draft goes to you guys, and then Kathy sends me a final version.
Yep.
But, you know, it's a week, or sometimes longer, until the meeting, and things may change. And all it would take would be a phone call to let me know that you're added or taken out something, and I could rent you a clean copy and have it for the meeting. Or you can do it by pen and ink, as you're doing right now. It doesn't matter to me.
Maybe we can...what do you think about Kathy getting the last final draft?
I feel like it seems to be working better than it was before.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we'll talk with Kathy, so that maybe...when do you print this stuff off, Alan?
I try to get it to her two weeks in advance.
Yep.
She tries to get the final agenda to me a week in advance. And I send it email to you guys.
Yeah.
And then I'll come down a day or two before and make the Xerox copies. But there's no reason, if there's a change, that could come down, you know, that day and run them off.
Okay. Let us talk to Kathy.
Whatever you work on, it's fine.
And see what makes it more comfortable for her, so that you, we would have the latest, so if the public wants one, they know it's happening.
Yeah, well, they're clamoring for it tonight, I noticed.
Yeah, and I feel badly, because they're gonna be upset, so...
At least this meeting was posted, yeah.
About final draft.
Are you gonna bring back the presentation reports for a future time? I would expect budget yes.
Yes. We'll have new ones for you next time.
Okay, 'cause I can carry any of those over that you want.
Yeah, no, we better just leave it blank for the presentation, except for budget. Okay, superintendent's report.
Logisticare contract, well, I've been chasing it for a long time, but we are now in the business of, we're a transportation agent for a company called Logisticare, and for all kids who qualify for main care eligibility, we're allowed 50 cents a mile per child who's driving with us, as long as the child is in the car. For example, we're going to Portland every day, so we'll be getting, you know, I can't remem--it's 87 miles, I believe, something like that, and so we'll be getting $40 one way. But we're also collaborating with SAD 55, 'cause that's, so that, we're carrying their kid to one place in Portland, and they're carrying our kid to Scarborough. But since we're Logisticare now, so that means we'll be getting a dollar a run on that trip. So it doesn't matter, as long as the kids make care eligible, we're gonna be reimbursed. Such a short sentence, so much work. You know, it's unbelievable.
And are you gonna use the van?
Yeah, we're using a van. Yep. Loan CAM, capital asset management loan. I know you've approved this before, but Dan feels it would be just better if we did a notion, a motion authorizing it, then do the vote. And as soon as I do my, we can do that now, if you'd like. You've all had a chance to look at it. The motion's at the top, and then we all sign one copy, fax to him tomorrow. The deal with this right now is, we're doing this tonight. The selectmen, it's probably overkill, but we've asked, we got a paper like this with a selectman, and I believe they're March 3rd, so we're gonna attempt to close this loan March 4th. It's not desperation, because we still have cash flow, but we really need to get this before the end of the quarter, that, when the quarter bills come through, so...
Do you want the motion?
Sure.
I move that the vote entitled "Vote to authorize issuance of a $240,000 general obligation note" be approved in the form presented to this meeting, and that the superintendent file an attested copy of said vote with the minutes of this meeting.
Second that.
All right. All those in favor?
And if I could get a copy of that?
Those opposed?
Now, do we sign?
Okay.
Then you can start, Donnell, please.
Yep.
Donnell's gonna start, so we'll go down this way.
Yep, we'll just sign it on the way down.
Thank you. That, you know, the good part about this is we saved a year's interest, right? Because by the time we do this, it's gonna be March, so, you know, this, that's good.
Is this for general operations?
Yep. That was, you know, part of what we did, is we were gonna do this beginning of the year, and we made, I made the mistake on the warrants.
Oh, my bad.
Right, and then, so what we did is, we financed it through our cash flow, and then we always said right along that that was fine, but eventually, at the end of the year, a little tighter on cash flow, and now's the time to do it.
Cash flow's a little tight.
Well, yeah. And interest rates are down on our loan, so it's like, not, interest-wise, it worked out great. Special education report, just to give you an update, and I put it into my communication emails, which I'm trying to do on a regular basis. Kathy and I promised ourselves, every Wednesday when we leave, we send out an email, so that's what we're trying to do. So this is a little bit of a repeat, but, you know, we work with CDS, and CDS has a, there's gonna, there's four children that will be giving us the heads-up, that will have special ed needs coming into K next year, 'cause they're not pre-K, they're going directly to K. So I just wanted to communicate on that. The other thing I wanted to share with everybody is that we are looking at GORM for a partnership in which we can mutually benefit for just the special ed. We had a special ed meeting, we said, "These are our needs, where do you have the capacity?" We're trying to match needs and capacity to see if we can get it. For example, in a elementary K-2 autism program, you know, we're gonna have some candidates for that program, they happen to have some room in that program, so then we're gonna do, we're gonna explore that option. So it's just kind of a heads-up, that we're not signing anything, but we're going that way. Also, on the high school level, there's a couple of opportunities for children to go to Volk School and participate in an adult, and not an adult, high school autism program, or other programs that suit their needs and are better matches for us.
And it's less expensive than outsourcing them to a daycare?
To special purpose private schools.
Right.
And that's just one of the options we're pursuing, to try to economize on our special ed. And transportation's the other one, but, you know...
I have a question about the CDS. I feel like I heard, when we were looking at adding pre-K, when we went around to different schools, and we had a conversation about CDS. Do we get reimbursed, like, any of the services that we provide, is it reimbursable through CDS for any of our kiddos who may...
Qualify.
Qualify.
That is, that's a very great, very great question. For example, you know, we have some kids, we'll just stick with CDS right now, but if they're main care eligible, right? And if they're in our school, the way it's supposed to be, if you're below a certain age, you have two choices, CDS can provide the services. But the problem is, a lot of times, is CDS in this area finds it really hard to provide those services. So we provide the services, and then we attempt, we try to get reimbursed from CDS. I'm trying to think of the cutoff age. Most of the time, it's just our pre-K kids. And in our pre-K, you try not to identify kids in pre-K unless they have, you know, extremely high needs that would be a benefit to them, right? So you don't, but the answer is yes, and we have one child who we are attempting to get reimbursed from CDS that's in pre-K right now.
What's the timeframe on getting reimbursed from CDS for services that we provide? Is it like a three years out, is it, you know, six months?
No, that's a good question. No, it's six months.
Okay.
You know, three months.
Well, that's pretty good.
Put it this way, I haven't seen a check yet, right? And we're in March, so it's, you know, you gotta jump through some hoops, right?
Oh, yeah.
But the encouraging part of that is, for example, in our K-1 program, we have a couple of kids, and we have a relationship with Woodford, and we just finally got the help on that, and so we'll be getting reimbursed from Section 28 for some of those kids. Not Section 28, Section 65.
65.
65, very.
Okay.
My God, it's a game. You know what I mean? And our depth of expertise is thin, and we're working on it. We're also applying for a high out-of-district placement cost within a month, right? But when you said two years, I know what you were thinking of, because I said, regular special education costs go in the pipeline, but it takes two years to get some of those funds back. This year, we went up 33 on our EPS, and if you look at the 279, you know, 80% of that is from special ed increases. But that was the last year, we were 61, so we're still having issues with that. We're gonna do our best, we're gonna concentrate, right now, we're concentrating on providing the services our kids need. And remember, in that email I sent you also, at one point, we talked about how many more kids we have that we are servicing in the past. And I think that is a little bit of catch-up.
Yes.
And a little bit of changing demographic, a little bit of just the natural in-and-out of flow of kids that need help. Right now, let's get the services, let's get it done. And that way, we're protecting ourselves, and we're doing the right thing for kids.
For the kids.
Right. And then let's, now let's really concentrate on trying to maximize any outside sources of funds that we possibly can.
When we get the monies back from the state, does that go into the line of special education, or does that go into the general fund? Because we've taken money out of the general fund, did...
It goes, it's on your quote, 279, or 279's just a six-page document that tells you how much money you're getting from the state.
Okay.
And so it goes into general revenue, and when we look at the budget papers I gave you today, it's gonna be right on line three or four, right at the top, and it's gonna say state aid. Even though in, you know, for example, you know, 61 got $1.1 million. It wasn't all special ed, right? But we're a minimum receiver, they call it. So what they do is, they assess all your needs, and then you have to be below a threshold, and we are not below that threshold, so we don't get any of those funds. Special ed slides in a different line, so we're able to get reimbursed with that. So that's that funding formula. I was actually looking at 279, and today at the meeting, we were talking about, maybe we should put some notes in? It'd be interesting sometime to take a part of a meeting and just look at how a 279 works.
Yeah, it wouldn't be...
And if I can get one from Fort Fairfield, I could, you know, compare.
Compare the two.
Right? Because there is, there's quite a difference. And we're a minimum receiver, and that means that we have extremely high property values, so that's basically what it is.
Is this someplace where we can find out where we stand via the property values? I mean, is, you know, are we close to 50% or, you know, for funding, or, because we, what percentage do we get? Zip to nil, probably?
We figured it out last night, didn't we, Joe? 8%?
Mm-hmm.
In that ballpark? 8% of our total $3.1 million budget comes from the state.
Okay.
And, you know, let me check the math on that. Is it eight? If it's not eight, it's close, 'cause we actually start...
It's a small number.
It's a small number.
Yeah.
Because we said it was below 10%, that I remember.
Yeah.
And for example, when I left Fort, I'm not picking on Fort, you know, Fort's really poor. We just think we're poor down here, okay? But they're receiving 81% of their money from the state. So if they had a $3.1 billion, their budget was $7 million, so they would receive $5.6 million, you know, in state aid.
But if we could take out the summer season, the people that's sitting on the water...
Yeah.
Okay, then what's the real valuation of this town? Most of us...
Okay, the problem, very simply put, is you take the valuation of the town and look at the number of kids we have, and you can figure out, I figure there's so much valuation for child. And I've done that before, and we're right in the category with York, the town of York. So that's, it's perceived that we don't need the money, that's really what it is, and it's...
But it's because of the tourists.
Because of the people...
It's because of the value of your land on the water.
Land is the waterfront, you know?
And how the state does the funding formula. That's all. They could change it, it's been discussed over and over, but it hasn't changed yet. But for towns like ours...
Yeah, we get the car wash...
I get a 279. The 279 has a number on it, right? And there's not oddly anything, I can't, I don't know, any way of changing that number. So we plug that in, we say, "Okay, that was," I don't wanna make stuff up, but let, you know, if it's a half million, and our budget's $3 million, then we gotta come up with 2.5 at the local level, right? And you got your miscellaneous federal Title I, all that, but that doesn't add up to a lot either, you know? But that's the way it is. And the other side of the coin on that, as I can tell you, is, you know, your property value may be higher, but your mill rate's lower. And if you go to some of these poorer communities, the valuations are lower, their mill rate's higher. Just, that doesn't mean they're not paying as much in taxes, it's just that they have, there's no value, right? Like, well, no.
We just have to bite the bullet and accept it.
And that's what it is, right? So special education...
Not happily, but we need to do it.
The last thing on special education, you know, we did have two students from our last meeting that started at first special purpose private schools, and, because that's the right placement, and then we'll see how it goes from there, and I'll fill you in in the future.
Are they there under evaluation?
IEP.
No, but I mean, are they there, and, it's not that it's written in stone, they have to stay there. Are they there on a...
Correct, they're there on a, they're being evaluated.
Evaluating, yeah, that's the right, we think it's the right place, but, okay.
So next thing on my list was budget issues. I did pass out to the school board first draft of our budget. I say first draft, it's the first draft to go public, we've had many drafts before that. Joe and Audrey are consistent members of the budget committee, and I'd like to set another budget meeting date before we leave, but it'll remind me later. Right now, we're looking at a 2.3% increase in our operations side, our expenditures, and we're looking at a 4% increase in our town request. The town request is equal to about $126,000. 4%, considering last year we went 0%, so the last two years means you're averaging at 2. If you look at the last three years, we're averaging 2.16. And, you know, our revenues are up by 4-point-something percent, and expenditures are up 2.3. The big thing is, last year, we had more disposable reserve funds, because we had that larger check, one-time deal from 61. And we were able to access those funds last year to keep the tax increase to zero, and then now, that money was a one-time deal, 'cause we spent it, right? And so we had to be much, much tighter on how much carryover funds we committed, because this year, we did do a lot of projects that quote, "weren't in the regular budget," that were paid for in reserve funds, and all the reserve funds we used. Technology's got a little bit left in it, 'cause we really wanna save for the computers, but as far as the operations go, we took full advantage of opportunities. For example, not operations, but transportation, we had spent 25 grand this year, because we got $69,000 for a bus. And, you know, we did the special ed restraint room, 'cause we needed to do it, and we changed and reorganized the special ed room. That was a minimum of 15, some other costs might have gone somewhere else. You know, the furnace was the big one. We had budgeted $20,000 for three years, and we'll do it in three years, but then when it came time to look it over, it really needed to be fixed now. So, and then when we did that, we discovered the asbestos issue, which was, I think, 13. And then when we got the new furnace in, the circulator pump couldn't handle the new capacity, but the circulator pump was also 50 years old. So it's a circular, we have a new circulator pump, new furnace, and as far as I know, we have no asbestos left in the school whatsoever.
That's great.
Yep, so that won't come back again. And then, you know, we were, you know, we were over on some special ed costs, and we were over a little bit on technology, but technology's done.
We don't have to worry about it for a while.
We're, and speaking of technology, Avery had his baby today, so congratulations.
Little girl, little boy.
Last night. Little boy, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Theo.
Theo, that's right.
Welcome, Theo.
I like that name.
That's adorable.
So, I'm gonna share this information tomorrow. I gotta take this, believe it or not. Okay, and I'm done.
All right. Onward and upward. This is good.
Yeah.
I guess we're gonna survive, right? As far as the budget goes, we're gonna survive.
Okay.
All right. Under action items, we have a considerable number of policies that are up for a second read.
Perfect.
Which we have all gone over prior to the meeting.
Thank you very much.
So I would like to have a motion to have a second read and acceptance of these policies, if I may.
A through Q, right?
Yes, A through Q, yep.
Thank you very much.
I move that we accept policies A through Q as appearing on our agenda this evening for second read.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, that we have a second read on items A through Q. All those in favor? Opposed?
You need a second vote to approve them now?
Approve them, yes, I'm sorry.
Yep.
That's what you meant, correct?
Second reading and approval?
Yes, yes.
That's what I mean.
That's what I wrote down here, Donnell.
Wow, it's like you're in my head.
Don't let the get-around people, we'll talk.
We could have a little bit of fun once in a while.
No, you put it down.
All righty. The second part, under the policies, is we had A through P, and I don't think I need to read all of them. I don't think I need to read all of them. Okay? Asking for a first read. And again, at our prior meeting, we have gone through those, and we have made revisions, additions, deletions, et cetera. So they'll be coming back at the next meeting for a second read and approval. So I'd like.
Now, the ones that I sent to you folks, I got from Kathy, I assume, were current at that time.
Yes, yep, at the time.
And I'm assuming also that you don't need hard copies. Electronic copies, because you're gonna review them at board meetings?
We have, we meet prior to.
I know, I know.
And Kathy is gonna be providing us with those copies. But there's something I gotta talk with you about.
If you ever need hard copies, let me know.
Okay. I need to talk with you about something after the meeting, too. Okay? So could I have a motion to have a first read of policies A through P?
I'll make a motion to approve the first read of policies A through P as written on the agenda.
Ready? Approved and seconded, or motion seconded? That we approve the policy, for a first read on A through P. All those in favor? Opposed? All righty. So those will be on for a second read next month. Alan and Kathy hasn't given us the list of first reads yet for the next one. We're almost, we are almost through this manual.
Good. Do you need to have?
Oh, honey, we are. We are. All planned. You're invited, Alan. Okay. Under discussion items, the school committee goals. We wanna get this thing off. I think you have them somewhere, but I'll pass this. I don't know if I have enough for everybody. Yeah, I don't. Joe, no, there's three. Yep.
Can you pass that one down?
Okay.
Joan, I can share.
Yeah. And what we were looking at was growing lifelong learners. Right. Growing, that's right. I didn't, see, I didn't have that one, did I? Okay.
We have an extra one.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Throw it out. Okay, we don't need it. Thank you. I, when I read the minutes of the meeting, I realized I had a responsibility. And it was to find out what a value statement was. All right? So I did some looking, and then I made one up. So I'm not, throwing it out for grabs. We still, at the present time, under vision statement, we have to foster a growth mindset through the community. And I had presented this one to you before. I don't think we did anything with it. So I'm looking at that one for, to either keep the old one or look at the new one. And then under value statement, it said that a value statement should not be a long list of things you wanted to do or of what you are doing. A value statement should be an eye-catching few words that encapsulate what the values of the school are all about. So I wrote down an independent school. And then to describe it would be a reality arrived at through great effort and determination by parents and community to meet the needs of our youth. So I don't know if you wanna elaborate on that, you wanna think about it, but. At least it's a beginning, okay?
So is our vision statement, dream, believe, achieve?
Can what?
Is our vision statement, dream, believe, achieve? Is that what it is?
Well, no. Right now, it's to foster a growth mindset through the community. But I thought that was a bit redundant for growing lifelong learners.
Right. So, okay, and then the value, you're saying the value statement could be an independent school?
Right. Which people would say an independent school. What's that? Well, it's a reality, because hard work, see, so, and I might not be seeing what we mean by that. And that might not be the right thing we wanna say, but I, we had to start somewhere, so.
Right, right.
So per usual, I started, and you guys finish.
I see, okay. And so we, okay, so we have that one and the vision statement to.
Yeah, I just.
That's what I thought.
I just thought it was, you know, there wasn't enough difference between mission and vision. I mean, there doesn't have to be, but.
No, I think that, I agree. I think the vision is a little verbose.
So I don't know, I mean, you might wanna keep this, take it home, beat it up, tear it apart, add to it, whatever you wanna do. There's no need.
Does value independent school mean, without being aware of the community, should it be an independent responsive school?
I like that, because it became about through the community.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, let's put that in there.
And I assume you mean achieve, A-C-H.
Where are you?
I-E-V-E.
Oh, yes. I taught math, Alan, because I couldn't spell.
And then there should be a comma after ethical.
And after ethical? Where is ethical? It's down here somewhere. I know it's in there, productive ethical, yep. Every time I see a comma, I think of Kirsten. She told me the comma's separating. And there should be one after and also, because of her rule.
According to her, but I still don't believe that.
Oh, I always put them after and.
Well, she said legally, that keeps you out of trouble.
Or before and, yeah.
So we gotta be careful with that.
I always do that.
All right. Sorry. So we get to one stat. Alan put his two cents worth in.
I have something percolating.
Oh, oh, she's percolating.
We're not voting on anything tonight, right?
No, 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 no.
I have something percolating.
Go ahead, percolate, perk.
Yeah. I need to go home and listen to the CD.
Oh, okay.
How about a community-inspired school?
Ooh, I like that.
Community. Community-inspired. I like that, Wendy.
I like that.
Yep. Okay, so keep perking.
Okay.
Keep percolating.
Percolating.
Bring it back next time, Tina.
Yes.
Percolating for next time.
Yep, that'll be.
And also, do we wanna talk about the vision statement also?
Yeah, why not? Do the whole thing all at once.
I think we should, because I like dream, believe, achieve a lot better than the other one.
I have the word grow just on this loop in my head.
Where, under vision or mission?
But I haven't connected anything to it, so.
Okay.
For vision, because, because our mission is growing lifelong learners.
Right.
So that's why I said it's percolating. It's not a complete thought yet.
Yep.
Okay. We have to remember.
And I like to come up with rhymes, so I'll see what, ew, I like it, comes up. And bring it back next time.
Yep.
I like dream, believe, achieve, too.
I do, too.
But I like that, but I.
I think it's like dream, believe, achieve, grow.
Or turn it into a rhyme that people would remember.
I got some ideas, too.
All right.
For a dream, believe, achieve, to ensure that all students.
To ensure that?
Just an idea, to ensure that all students strive to reach their highest levels of academic achievement. Or do I need the word strive? To ensure that all students, oh, take the word out, to, reach their highest levels of academic achievement.
Oh, they're, so they.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are, because.
Because it makes it more individual.
Right, exactly.
Say it again, Mark, please.
To ensure that.
Yeah.
All students reach their highest levels of academic achievement.
Yep, because then we go on to to them, to enable them.
Yep. And then, in the last sentence, it should be, I like ethically. And prepare them to become productive, responsible, compassionate, and ethically creative members of society.
Well, I don't think ethical and creative necessarily go together.
It's because there's supposed to be a comma there.
I think they're two things.
Yeah, that's why this was.
I don't think you're ethically creative. I think you're ethical and you're creative.
I was reading it.
Yeah, ethically creative.
So if you put a comma, right.
That changes things, yeah. That changes everything.
So comma after ethical.
Yes.
Maybe.
And a comma after creative.
And prepare them to become productive, responsible, ethical, creative. Okay, that makes sense. I was reading it ethically creative, and it didn't make quite.
Are you ethically creative, Wendy?
I'm not creative at all.
I'm not sure.
I'm ethical, she's creative.
Yeah.
The power of a comma.
Or it might be unethically creative. You never know what I might come up with.
You're right.
Guess we have homework then.
Biggie button?
Guess we have homework.
This is homework. Play with it. Keep perking, don't, Alan? It's coming, that's what I'm saying. We gotta have a place to start.
I like it.
And then we can go there. But we can, then we can finally get through with our goals. Okay, we've got, there's so many public comments on non-agenda items, we're gonna have to put that on to next week.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. And we have our future meetings. The budget committee is February 19th.
Yeah, that's already gone by.
What?
So the budget committee is, what I'd like to do is change that, well, the budget committee workshop. I, we should've talked about this yesterday, but, you know, March 4th, I'd like to meet one more time, because we're still making changes today. I'd like to get like a draft two going. So I got March 4th. We can do March 4th or 18, or both.
And/or.
Or and/or. The reason I picked the 18th is you're already here for a 1 o'clock meeting, Audrey. So I'm trying, so if we went at 2 that day on the 18th, is that convenient for you, or?
18th is great. The 4th, I cannot do.
Okay.
All right, we'll make it to the 18th.
Make it the 18th?
Yeah.
Is that too far out, or do you feel comfortable with that?
I'm gonna do a draft, and I'm gonna get it done in my brain. And then I'm gonna send it out to everybody, but I'll be looking for you and Joe's input. And then we'll meet on the 18th. And then, so let's see if this reads right.
Is that a Wednesday?
Yes.
Yep. So it's gonna be budget committee workshop on March 20th, no, March 18th.
Yep.
At 2:00 to 3:00.
At 2:00 to 3:00. Then we have a meeting on the 24th, which is our next school board meeting. So instead of working on policies, we're gonna be, we'll see. Maybe by then, policy slash budget, like today. But it probably has to be more budget slash policy.
Yep.
And then, but we'll see. We'll see the room right there.
Do we wanna meet at 5?
I'm gonna meet at 5 or 5:30. We used up every minute we did.
I did, but I have, the other thing I want on here is, on March 24th.
Well, the operations.
Operations committee's gonna be 4 to 4 to 5. So if you wanna go 5, that's fine, for the policy-budget thing. If we wanna continue and not lose momentum on the policies.
Models will do 5.
Models will do 5. And trust me, this policy thing will end.
You've been saying that for months.
Well.
Two years.
We're doing it. I think since Kathy, Kathy's kinda like helped us.
Oh, she's been, she's been a godsend.
Impetus-wise.
So is our school committee meeting only until 7:30 or 22?
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Well, it's only 7:15, and we're almost done.
Yeah, you don't have to put an end on it, though. We can take that out, please.
Yep. All the towels come home.
All right. I would like, I can't remember what this was for, negotiations, here we go. I'd like at this point to have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting and to go into executive session regarding, pursuant, 405-6D.
I still move.
Could I have a second on that, please?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Very good.